Okay, I would like to call this June 5, 2018, study session to at order at 7:32 PM. Roll call, Ruth Ann?
Member Carter?
Here.
Member Hall?
Here.
Member Pat?
Here.
Member Polaski?
Here.
Member Fisher is here and Vice President.
Here. Don, do we have any additions, corrections, or modifications?
Yeah, we do. I'm gonna ask that we move the commendations and recognitions, the recognition of Urbana High School Girls Track Team to basically 3.01, so that they can go first and head on out. We have a number of students here tonight.
Okay, so we'll get started with the presentation.
I think we need to.
We need a motion to approve the agenda. So moved as amended?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposition, motions passed.
Okay.
So, Don, would you give us the honor?
Yeah, so I'd like to bring up Leslie Edmond, coach, and I'll let you introduce any runners that you have here today. I asked Coach Leslie just to talk a little bit about the season, little bit, I promised it was gonna be a little bit. But this is the first time that our Urbana High School Girls Track Team has placed as a team in the state meet, and so.
Woo! Yay!
That is huge. And then I had the opportunity of attending the Girls Track Banquet, and I learned that there were a number of other kind of firsts this year. So if you could just share some of those with the board, and then have any of the students come up that want to talk about their season too.
Okay. Do I face you guys, or do I face them?
Just talking to Mike.
Just talking to Mike.
First, I want to thank my mother for coming. She drove three hours.
Oh, all right.
I'd like to thank my entire coaching staff is here. I have Coach Sanders. I have Coach Phillips. Coach Benke. Coach Barokey. Coach Correll. And the wonderful woman that I took over for Amy Vascolo this year.
All right.
The athletes that I have with me are Kinsey Bostick. Tamia Johnson. Azure Rubel. Olivia Rosenstein. And Lenasia Carter. Is that all, is that all my girls?
Could you ask them to come forward, because I didn't see them, and I'm sure a lot of people didn't see you all. Come on, you deserve it.
Come on, girls.
They were excellent.
So Track works based on how many events you're in and then how you score, or how you place in that event, depends on how many points you get. So our points were accumulated by all these girls. You got four, and the four by eight.
All right.
And she got eight in discus, and a record.
All right. Uh-oh.
She also broke the four by eight school record.
All right.
Who also broke the record in a 300 hurdles.
All right.
Mia was part of the four by two that got fourth at state.
All right.
And Azure is one of our hardest working athletes that we have, and she went as one of our alternates. And won most improved.
Thank you so much.
So we had a lot of diversity this season. Getting third should not have happened. We shouldn't even have been to state, honestly. Two of our top sprinters got serious injuries, very, very serious injuries, and we just adapted. It just kept rolling with the punches. I had a major surgery, I had some complications from that surgery, my assistants, Coach Pease, I couldn't have done it without Coach Pease, you know, manned the ship for me when I couldn't be there. We had removed a couple of kids from the team, then we got DQ'd at state. I mean, there were so many things going against us, and it shouldn't have happened, but it did. So I want my girls that are here, and share it with your teammates, that if a group of girls, especially a young group of minority girls, when you get together and use that power for something good, amazing, things can happen. Look what we did! Look what we did! We pulled it together, and I can honestly say Lenasia would probably never be friends with Azure, but you know what, ain't nobody ever gonna mess with Azure, and Lenasia's not gonna say something.
Okay, okay.
So we become track sisters, we become a big family. I mean, that's how we see each other. We're just a family, and we support each other, and we brought home a trophy for the first time in UHS history for Track, which is back there. There's some pictures back there, and being proud. There's the trophy there.
Oh, wow!
So I, there's a lot of things I could say about this team, but I am honored, I am just honored, and I feel incredibly blessed to be their coach. I thank them for letting me be their coach, because I know that that's an honor in itself. I love every single one of my athletes, like they were my own daughters, and I promise you, Dr. Owen, I promise you, I will bring you home a champion.
All right. Thank you so much, job well done. Going on now to 4.0, I have received some citizens requesting to speak, so if anyone is interested, please grab a golden rod sheet and give it to Laura. So the first name that I'll be calling will be Angela King, and behind Angela, Kristy Lee.
Good evening, I'm Angela King, and I'm here to present a statement on behalf of teachers, staff, and parents in the community who have been organizing over the last week to address some concerns that have been brought to our attention. So I'm gonna read this statement, and then I'll have a few more things to say.
Speak into mics too, Angela, so everyone can hear you.
Yep, so this is addressed to all the school board. As Urbana School District 116 parents, teachers, and staff, we believe the working conditions of our staff are the learning conditions of our students. Students deserve a safe environment conducive to learning, and teachers deserve a safe environment free from fear and intimidation. We find that the working conditions should be unacceptable and are contributing to unsafe spaces that are counterproductive to learning. We will not tolerate the fractured relationship between administration and staff, and likewise, administration and parents. We demand that you, our elected officials, take immediate action to restore transparency, honesty, and adherence to Illinois School Code in Urbana School District 116. And this is signed by 163 people in our community, and this is out of a group that is on Facebook for the past five days, and there's over 600 of us that have, are coming together to organize. So I'm speaking for myself now, not this statement, but there's been some serious issues that have brought to our attention from really extreme issues that need to be addressed immediately to really important issues that should be addressed soon, as well as a number of issues that are, have been occurring for some time. And one issue that I want to speak to that was brought to my attention a week ago, and I've heard several accounts now, is that there's a teacher at one of the elementary schools that was removed from the classroom mid-year, and there's some serious allegations floating around there, and the parents haven't received any information about this, and I don't know that the school board is aware of it, but I would encourage you to look into this. This involves a LEO teacher, so I'm sure you can do your homework and find this out, but I think the parents are owed some answers, and it's, very strong language has been used that this teacher shouldn't be placed back in the classroom or work with children again, and there's been some indication that this teacher might be placed back in the school in the fall. So I, if this doesn't get addressed, or we don't have some answers, we will continue to bring this to the board, and to the community, and to the media, whoever we need to bring it to. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will email to you all this.
Thank you. And then after Kristy Lee, we have, is that Ronnie Turner-Winston?
Hi. My name is.
Yes, we can hear you.
My name's Kristy Lee, and I'm here tonight to share a recent incident that has me very concerned about the climate within our school district. While attending an end-of-year field trip with my first grade daughter, an individual engaged in a conversation with me. This individual told me that because my daughter has Down Syndrome, she did not belong in school. It would be better for everyone if she attended a segregated school somewhere else, and the teaching her to read was a waste of time. The most disturbing part of this conversation is that this individual was Urbana School District 116 staff. Yes, you heard me correctly. I was told by school staff that because of her disability, my child did not belong, and teaching her was a waste of time. I wish I could say that this was the only conversation like this I've had with school staff, but it is not. I have had at least one child with Down Syndrome attending Urbana schools since 2002, and there have been several conversations resembling the recent one I described. Previous experiences include classroom teachers saying that our daughter really wasn't their student because she was a special ed kid, being told that they, the teacher, didn't ever talk to my daughter because she was hard to understand, and being told that we should not bother with academics because our daughter should be a life skills kid. Individual incidences have been handled, but their number and frequency illustrate a problem exists in the climate of our schools stemming from a disconnect between the practices of staff and beliefs held by this board that are clearly laid out in the board's policy manual. The policy manual states in part that each individual has inherent value, everyone can and will be a successful learner, high expectations and work are necessary for individuals to achieve full potential, help students develop sensitivity to the needs and values of others, and a respect for individual and group differences, and to provide an educational climate and culture free of bias. The current school climate regarding students with disabilities is not acceptable and needs to change. The leaders of the Urbana School District must do a better job to ensure the practices of their staff are in line with the beliefs of the board. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ronnie Winston-Turner.
Once again, I am Ronnie Turner-Winston, and I'm speaking on behalf of several parents' groups in the Urbana School District. I'm a mom of four children that have gone through and are going through the Urbana School District schools from Washington Early Learning, King Elementary, Urbana Middle School, and Urbana High School. I've developed a lot of great relationships with the staff in all four of these schools over the 20 years that I've had children in these buildings. I'm not originally from this area, but we are a diehard Urbana Tiger family. Some of the decisions that have been made in the school district the last year have really had a detrimental impact on the teachers and the students in these buildings. Dare I mention it, going back to the situation with Dr. Avery Tatum, leading up to the situation with the deans, and the proposed change with these practices starting in August with discipline. Also this past year, there's been a great lack of communication between administrative staff and parents, not only for myself, but I hear this from a lot of parents in the Urbana School District, unreturned phone calls, unanswered emails, in regard to school policies and situations. I am a parent that likes to show up at the schools and visit my children in their classrooms, and be of help to teachers when I can, and was shocked to see a sign at the middle school this past year that you had to call to make an appointment first before visiting the school, and that was not a policy that was communicated, nor that I felt warranted the environment that is usually an open environment in the Urbana School District. There are so many unhappy people in the school district, and my focus is on the teachers because I believe they need our support from the community and the school district board. If the teachers aren't supported, and they cannot do their jobs, and if they can't do their jobs, they cannot provide the quality education that Urbana School District is known for. Frustrated parents are pleading with the school board, the superintendent, anybody that can assist us with getting these situations remedied. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up would be Linda Minor, and then behind her would be Scott Daniels.
Downs.
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 Downs. So Linda, you're up, and then Scott.
Hi.
And hi.
I'm Linda Minor, and I'm a parent, and along with all the other parents in Urbana School District, we want change, and we want change to be decision-making partners with the board and the district staff regarding the shape of that change. School code provides the mechanism, and it's the Parent-Teacher Advisory Committee mandated in Section 5, 10 through 20.14. It's titled "Student Discipline Policies: Parent-Teacher Advisory Committee." This committee is charged by statute to develop with the school board, with the school board, policy guidelines on the following. Pupil discipline, including provisions to address students who have demonstrated behaviors that put them at risk for aggressive behavior. School searches. Bullying prevention. Reciprocal reporting systems between the school district and local law enforcement, and school bus safety procedures. And furthermore, the statute provides that the school board, along with Parent-Teacher Advisory Committee, must annually, annually review their pupil discipline policies, the implementation of those policies, and any other factors related to the safety of their schools, pupils, and staff. It is important to note that district administrators failed to follow the statute and include a Parent-Teacher Advisory Committee when they proposed school discipline code this spring. We would like to respectfully request that the violation of this statute be immediately rectified. As parents, we want you to know that we are ready to serve on this committee. A process that engages those who best know these students, namely their parents and the educators who work with them every day, will arrive at best decisions for change because we will have arrived at them together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Scott Downs. I'm a lifelong Urbana resident. I actually know most of you. I started this Facebook group Friday evening. Within 12 hours, we had 100 people.
Wow.
Today, I just checked it right before I walked up, it stands at 664 members. There are parents and teachers from across the board, all schools, all grade levels, and the reason I brought it together was initially because there's a lot of frustration within the community. And that's the one thing about Urbana, is that it always has been a community. We have always worked together for the betterment of our students and for our population in It's been stated before, but I'll reiterate, there is a lot of concern with a lot of the directions that the school's taking. My personal experience, my personal experience with this, and I was asked by my son to relay this experience, was when he was in seventh grade, he was using the restroom, and he was attacked, and his head was slammed into the wall. And we spoke with the administration at the school, and we ended up filing a police report because we were told that was probably the most effective way to go about handling the My son, who is in, who will be a seventh grader this year, he's a rising seventh grader, his sixth grade team this year, the policy for his team seemed to be whenever anyone got in trouble, the team got punished. His team was held out of certain activities. They were, there was actually a reorganization of the schedule midway through the year because there were so many conflicts between students and the classes, that they actually reorganized the entire sixth grade schedule for his team, just to try to separate these kids. So the frustration is real, the anger is real, but that does not mean that we are coming to you as enemies. We want to work with the school board, we want to work with the administration. Our hope is that a solution can be found and will be found, but it needs to have support from the community, from the parents, from the teachers, from all of us, because these are our children. I mean, this is the whole reason we're all doing this, is to turn these children out to the best possible end. So I hope that in hearing these statements, the school board does not feel like we are coming to them in a combative sort of way. It really is in the hope that we can find a solution that works for everyone, and that we can move forward and get back to the feeling of community that we've enjoyed for so long. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see that there are no more, so moving on, there is no call for any executive session after this meeting. At this time, I'm gonna have the administrative briefings and reports done by Don and Carol.
Yep, so we have one fairly short administrative briefing report about the auction of Washington School. So Carol, do you want to?
Sure.
Give an update on that?
Real quick, just want to let the board know that we have been publicizing the auction of Washington School. It's actually gonna be in the paper for the last time tomorrow. The auction will be held on Monday, June 25, and we're gonna, at 2:00 PM, and we are gonna hold it at Washington Early Childhood School. So if you're interested, please, please come by. We're gonna have a special auctioneer as well, so please not pay any attention. So the established bid by the board was $75,000, minimum bid. If anybody is interested in having a tour of the facility, they can contact me, and we'll walk them through. Information is available on our website as well. The bid package is available under the district part of the website, under public notices, and if you need additional information, people can feel welcome to contact me directly, and we'll answer any questions they may have. 2:00 PM, 2:00 PM on June 25.
Can I just ask Carol quickly, and Carol, can you remind us what will happen if we don't get the $75,000 minimum bid at the auction?
We can then, at that point, decide if we want to put it on the market with the realtor.
Okay. Okay.
That's one of the options.
Thank you, did you want to?
We can also have another bid too, but we probably won't go down that road since this will be the third time.
Any more board questions pertaining to Carol? Don, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Nope.
So now we'll go to 9.0, policy review, Don.
Yeah, so the board, and I believe these went out with the board packet, Lori, or they, their copies got up this morning. So the executive summary went out, press 96, 97, and 98. Press 96 is a very large set of policies. The majority of them are legal reference updates, however, there are some small minor changes. I'm just gonna hit a couple of them, and I just wanna, just wanna scroll through here, sorry about my bifocals. The, as I said, many of them are legislative updates that relate to just wording in the policy itself, clarifying language about legal requirements, so those deal with things like facilities management, transportation. There are ones, 4:170 regarding safety. The proposed policy update is to comply and align with the statutory requirements related to the School Safety Drill Act, as well as updated regulations about lead testing of water sources in K-8 schools. If you remember, we had a couple of reports on that in this fall. That legislation about water testing rolls up every year to include newer and newer buildings, and so schools that weren't tested last year in that K-8 range because of their age or renovation will eventually get tested, I believe by 2020. All of our K-8 schools will have full testing done, and we've been addressing those periodically with the board as we've gone along. Abuse and Neglected Children Reporting Act, actually the changes in that are more noted for the public, and that is that they added many more reporting options and phone numbers directly into board policy. And so there are a lot of places on our website where you can find out about reporting and being a mandated reporter if you're a school employee, but now in the board policy, there are a number of alternates to the traditional hotline, DCFS hotline number, for reporting any kind of abuse or neglect that anybody can call in. Staff Development Program, there are some proposed changes related to new requirements by state law that include annual trainings in cultural competency, recognizing and reducing implicit bias, and then for employees who handle such materials, training on the safe use and handling of hazardous or toxic materials. Those are all things that have been updated by state law in the past year. There are also, actually, three of these policies deal with the same thing, related to a new law that prohibits school social workers from providing direct services to students outside of the school day as part of a private practice. And so essentially, it's, I believe it was called a social work moonlighting bill, that said that school social workers could not provide social work services to schoolchildren in a district in which they worked. So I'll let that sink in for a minute. Let's see. There is a one related to suspension, and a suspension of an employee. DCFS now has the power to recommend to districts that districts remove an employee from his or her position when that employee is a subject of a pending DCFS investigation, and how that relates to their employment in the school district. And curriculum content, there's changes related to physical education. The proposed changes are in response to new legislation that clarify what it means to have frequent physical education courses at the elementary level. It now states a minimum of three days during a five-day week. That actually matches very nicely with our current elementary PE schedule since the introduction of elementary PE teachers in 2016. Home and hospital instruction changes, who is able to basically prescribe home or hospital instruction. It does not have to be a medical doctor, it can also be a nurse practitioner, or an advanced practice registered nurse. Let's see. The next ones are all legal references. There is one on marching band that I, I've checked with the high school. It does not, it's a PE waiver. Does not change our current practice, but it clarifies that there's a state law that relates to waiver for PE for anyone who is in marching band or interscholastic or extracurricular athletic program to be waived from PE during the ongoing participation in that program. So that means that during marching band season and for that semester, they can waive PE. Let's see. A number of them are word changes that relate to a governor's executive order which mandates that the use of the word "ward" be eliminated from all laws and government policies referring to children who are under the care of DCFS. And so you'll see throughout our policy, the word "ward" being eliminated. And so that's, covers several of them. There are proposed changes to attendance policy, 770, that add language required, that requires the district to create protocols for excusing a student for up to five days from attendance when his or her parent or guardian is an active duty member of the uniform services and is either on leave or immediately returning or leaving for deployment. So returning from deployment or leaving to deployment. We have to have administrative procedures that relate to making sure that students in that situation can receive up to five days of excused absence. The Student Behavior, 1, 7190, simply is a change in school law that is specifically relates to Urbana School District because we receive early childhood block grant funding. And by school law, students enrolled in district's state-funded preschool programs may be temporarily removed or transitioned to a new program in accordance with federal and state law. However, state law prohibits the expulsion of students from these programs. So it's basically an extension of Senate Bill 100 that says preschool children cannot be expelled from school. That I don't believe has happened in my time on the. Let's see. There's also changes to orders to forego life sustaining treatment. Those changes relate to who should serve on what is called the Large Multidisciplinary Meeting, as well as how those meetings should be recorded and documented by both parents and school staff. And then there's one concussion bill that mandates and clarifies training for people involved in the Youth Sports Concussion Safety Act and implementing that act in our schools. And then we get down into the 97 and 98 policies. The important ones there, there are a couple that are required to be approved before July 1st. One of them is one that updates accounting and audit procedures related to board policy to be in compliance with the Federal Grant Accounting and Transparency Act, otherwise known as GATA. And that act is something that is new this year. Not the GATA Act is actually two years old, Carol? Two or three? One or two? One or two years old. But the, the kind of rules and regulations that how school districts respond to that is new this year in school code. Also, there's new policies and procedures related to laws called the State Officials' Employees' Ethic Act requires school districts to adopt an ordinance or resolution establishing a policy to prohibit sexual harassment. So at your next board meeting, and I don't know if that got sent out with this executive summary or not, you will actually have a resolution in front of you, 5:20, which is a resolution to prohibit sexual harassment. You'll have that in front of you. And so if you didn't get that in your packet, make sure you check with Lori and you'll have that to review prior to the next board meeting. There's also the curriculum content one that was based on a new law that came into effect in 2018, and that is that there's changes that require every school board to adopt a policy that mandates at least one unit of cursive instruction to be offered before the completion of grade five. So the Cursive Writing Act of 2018 is in our board policy, and our Director of Curriculum and Instruction already has been working with buildings and teachers to talk about where that's going to take place. There's also a new policy that is 6:135 that is called the Accelerated Placement Program Policy. And Dr. Bindum's mentioned that a couple of times in board meetings, as well as at a few family forums. This is a new policy that is required by changes to Illinois School Code. The goal of this policy is to provide educational programs with opportunities for each student to develop to his or her maximum potential. And right now, we're currently developing administrative procedures that align with that policy, as well as the, the code that is written behind that policy that talks about things like early entrance into kindergarten, early acceleration into first grade, as well as acceleration at other levels. And so that, those, those administrative procedures are currently, currently being written, and you will probably hear a report on those in August before we come back to school. Let's see. The, the last two really are, are just wording changes related to field trips and recreational class trips, clarification of student fee waivers regarding field trips. And that brings into a line what we currently do, even if it wasn't clear in our policy. If a student qualifies for a full waiver, they should not be charged for educational school field trips. The proposed changes in community resource persons and volunteers is simply adding language about crisis intervention services related to, for example, if we have a student or staff death, who we go to, to provide extra services. And that doesn't change our practice at all, but it actually solidifies it in board policy as recommended by IASB. And then the last one is school admissions and student transfers to and from non-district schools. That just changes the wording of that piece of policy as it relates to the acceleration, accelerated placement program that I mentioned before, the new policy 6:135. So that's a lot. You probably saw the packet. I tried to do the executive summary so that if things jump out at you over the next two weeks, you want more information, please email me and either myself or one of my team members will get you answers related to those policies. So, and I don't know, Todd, did you want to say anything additionally about 6135? That's the one that we probably spent the most administrative time on because it's, it's brand new.
No, I, I think you hit the highlights on it. It expands our current acceleration procedures, again, to include, you know, procedures for early entrance to kindergarten, first grade, subject level acceleration, as well as grade level acceleration.
Thank you. So that's it. If you have questions, please let me know in the next two weeks. We will have these in front of you for approval on June 19th.
Okay. So now we're going into action items, and we have four action items, and I'm actually going to read those so that if anyone wants to treat any of them as an individual item, otherwise we will vote on them together. The first one is 10.01 Memorandum of Understanding with the Urbana Free Library. Don Owen, Superintendent, and Celeste Chote, Director of the Urbana Free Library, request approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Urbana Free Library. 10.02 Resolution Authorizing or Directing the Sale or Disposal of Personal Property in accordance with 105 ILCs 5/10-22.8. Carol Baker, Chief Financial Officer, request approval of a resolution authorizing and directing the sale of disposal of personal property in accordance with 105 ILCs 5/10-22.8. Items on the list are library books from Leo, King, and Yankee Ridge. 10.03 UMS Discipline Program Changes for 2018-2019. Dr. Joseph Weemel, Ms. Shawna Shear, and Mr. Patrick Russell will be requesting approval of the proposed discipline structure presented during the May 15, 2018 Board Meeting. And then 10.04, did we have any administrative personnel items?
Yes, we have several that I'd like to highlight when we get there. So my administrative request would be that we pull that one off.
Pull that one. Board, do we need to pull anything else off?
Yes, I would like to pull off 10.03, the UMS Discipline Policy Changes for 2018-19.
So my suggestions, we do each one individually. How's that sound? Is there consensus? All right. So let's start off with 10.01 Memorandum of Understanding with the Urbana Free Library.
Yes, so I'll just, I'll just give a quick overview of this. This is the second year, so this will be our first renewal of this memorandum of understanding. If you remember, Celeste Chote, who, I think I saw her in the audience at some point? Is Celeste here? No. Celeste Chote and I and our staffs worked together to develop a memorandum of understanding that would allow Urbana Free Library to offer library cards to students who attend Urbana Schools but live outside the library taxing district. And that was through a series of, of in-kind contributions that the school district was making to the library, as well as, as well as a monetary contribution that the district has, has had in place for a number of years with the library, dates back to the early 90s, I believe. Carol, write the.
Sorry.
That's okay. The, the agreement that we have with the library regarding the, the U of I funds for Orchard Downs, which is not taxable. And so this memorandum of understanding is a renewal. The program got off to a little bit of a slow start, but we ironed out, kind of used this first year to iron out some, some kinks. And we had, I believe, 60 students apply for and use library cards who normally would have had to pay. And that we consider a small success, and we're looking forward to expanding that this coming year, in part by kind of ramping up the registration at centralized registration for library cards for students that live outside of the, outside of the library's taxing district. So that's what it is. There's also, we put in what's called an evergreen clause that our attorneys actually wrote for us. Jean Hancis worked with the city's attorney on this, and that basically means that they wouldn't have to come back to the board for annual approval. It would come back if requested by the board or by either administration of either entity so that it wouldn't be something we have to review every year, but we're happy to provide reports to you every year. So that's the only change really in the wording, is just making an evergreen, evergreen clause in that. So.
So at this time, do we have a motion for 10.01?
I move acceptance of the memorandum.
Second.
Okay, Ruth Ann, that calls for a roll call.
Member Carter.
Yes.
Member Hall.
Yes.
Member Patton.
Yes.
Member Palowski.
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Rollins, go.
Yes. Motion passed. For 10.02 Resolution of Authorizing or Directing the Sale of Disposal of Personal Property, do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second, Deb.
Roll call, please, Ruth Ann.
Member Carter.
Yes.
Member Hall.
Yes.
Member Patton.
Yes.
Member Palowski.
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Rollins, go.
Yes. 10.03 UMS Discipline Program Changes for 2018-2019.
And so I actually, we have Dr. Weemel and, and Mr. Russell here. And Sean, I don't know if you'd like to come up as well, but Dr. Weemel and Mr. Russell have asked to do just a quick overview reminder to the board and the public about what the proposed changes are. And so if you, we'll give them a moment to set up, and then they're happy to answer any questions before you take a vote.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Basically, we are just back with the same presentation, PowerPoint presentation from before, back in May. And so we would, just wanted to kind of remind you of the proposal, and then with a couple slides of the rationale and what the proposal will include. And, and then basically open it up to a Q and A and thoughts that you have as it relates to this proposal, and then hopefully lead to a vote for this proposal. So we're just going to jump straight down to the rationale slide. So the proposed changes that were put forth back in May spoke to shifting our discipline system from being a very reactive model to one that is much more proactive. So we want to really focus on the universal level, and we're thinking through a, a school system that's built on universal tier one, tier two, and tier three types of supports and, and responses to students. We want to move, really put a lot more effort at the proactive level, at the universal level, to teach and reteach and remind and encourage and foster behaviors that we seek in the school as it relates to the PBIS framework, and have less of an emphasis on the reactionary responses to student misbehavior. So of course, student misbehavior is still going to happen. However, we want to spend a lot more time upfront, teaching those skills in the classroom, at the universal level, in the hallway, in the bathroom, in the cafeteria, and put a lot more initiative in, in teaching those, those skills. So realigning and increasing supports for students and teachers to increase flexibility and decrease response time. So the proposal before you allows more trained staff and licensed staff to work with teachers in the classroom, to support teachers in the classroom in terms of classroom management, student behaviors in the classroom, as well as the tier two supports and tier three supports that teachers and students will need as it relates to behavior and discipline. And really moving away from just a punitive response model to behavior and teaching and being much more proactive and restorative in the work that we do. A model that better addresses student behaviors and needs while still ensuring that there are consequences as needed, when needed. And so this is not a proposal to reduce or remove consequences, but it is to increase the upfront work to ensure that students are engaging, that students are on task and experiencing class and school like we would hope that we want. But that doesn't mean that we are moving away completely from consequences. Consequences are important learning skills and learning opportunities for students to, to change behavior moving forward. And lastly, we want to ensure and increase equity in student outcomes and success. So the practices and structures that have been put in place historically and recently at Urbana Middle School have resulted in disparities in terms of our outcomes for students, particularly across race and other demographics as it relates to socioeconomic status. And so we want to ensure that our process and our structure is working to dismantle and, and reduce those disparities completely. And so the whole proposal is, is to combine all of these bullets to ensure a proactive system that's equitable, that is moving in the direction that we want for students and for our school. for, for our school. You guys can jump in. So we've already engaged in, in training this, the past week, we've engaged in training the last two days in PBIS, um, universal booster training. Uh, but we really need to implement a lot more professional development training this summer and ongoing throughout the school year as it relates to the process of procedures and the, the logistics of this new plan. Uh, really encourage and, and teach and provide job embedded, uh, opportunities for teachers to have restorative conversations, restorative classrooms, um, de-escalation strategies and trauma-informed approaches in the classroom at the universal level, the tier one level, but also to create systems, um, for students that need the additional supports and services at tier two and tier three. Uh, our professional development unified, unified professional development moving into next year is culture responsive teaching. So that would definitely fall into this, um, as it relates to the, the teaching and learning that goes on in the classroom. And of course, PBIS expectations differentiated by grade level, that's what we've spent the last two days on, a, a team of us really looking at our PBIS system as it currently exists and strengthening it, um, and becoming more explicit at each grade level and what that looks like across the school in different ways. Uh, we really want to target the restorative, uh, practices work that we've started. We really want to increase that as it relates to, at every level of the PBIS and the multi-tiered, um, system services, uh, and really provide more therapeutic crisis intervention training for staff, um, at the foundational level and when students are in crisis or, or experiencing, uh, emotional, uh, issues in the classroom and the hallway, et cetera. And so we just want more training and more people to be able to provide the on-the-job training and support in the classrooms and across the school than what we've been doing with our previous model. So what this explicitly looks like in terms of, uh, people and positions is that we are requesting that each grade level have the following. So specifically a grade level administrator, uh, a grade level counselor, school social worker at each grade level, a restorative practices facilitator, a clinical professional at each grade level, two, and, two student engagement advocates, and two student relation supervisors per grade level. And so we want to ensure that we are wrapping around our students and our teachers and our staff, um, in ways that we have not been able to do before. Uh, in the last couple of days that I've been working more at the middle school and preparing moving forward, I've had a lot of staff members, one of their biggest concerns from last year or previous years is the, uh, the limited or ineffective response time that they've received from support, coming to the classroom to support students and to support them as teachers. And so we've had just less staff. We haven't had enough staff to, to, to be able to effectively respond to a classroom and support a classroom within a few minutes. And so this type of structure and system would allow a lot more people that are trained in, in behavior, student engagement, um, clinician work, um, restorative work, et cetera, to provide services to students right away, to provide support to teachers right away, to provide consequences to students when needed right away. And so right now, the, the previous structure has not allowed for that to be as efficient as we want. And so this is the structure at each grade level. And so why, how would this look different for students and staff? I've already kind of said this, we've said this last time, really creating more opportunities for changing behaviors, shifting to supporting students rather than just, um, having punitive consequences for misbehavior. Because we know punitive consequences don't change the behaviors. They don't change future behaviors. The teaching and learning upfront and after those i- issues occur, what is what, are what changes behaviors. Um, student ownership and responsibility and improved relationships between students, faculty, and staff, and families. Uh, with this plan, we believe that we can restore trust, we can restore the concerns from the community and from teachers about safety. We can restore and, and rebuild a school culture that is built on being a community where we're value, value each other and, and we build up, build upon the strengths of each other, et cetera. And so the last slide just is, highlights the request of the board. Um, one of the things that we would add is that, um, if this proposal is accepted, uh, we are going to start right away in incorporating, uh, one of my goals as, as future principal, uh, pending board approval, is to start a principal advisory, or parent advisory committee, um, in addition to the parent, uh, PTSA, and provide lots of opportunities for family engagement, family input into this plan, the specifics of the plan, the logistics of the plan, because we need parent and community buy-in as well as teacher buy-in. And we've already had teachers work the past week on, um, starting the, the details and what this will explicitly look like in terms of the operation, operational aspect of this. And we want more people at the table moving forward if this plan is approved. If we can get approval tonight, that'll allow us to have a structure in place that we can now provide explicit, uh, details and, and, um, roles, responsibilities, and what, and operationalize this plan, but we want to operationalize it with family and staff and student input. And so that's our request to the board. You can see how the positions will be paid, where they'll be paying, being paid from, which, which funds. And, um, I'm going to pause there. Did I catch everything, miss anything? Did the team can take? So, um, we'll stop there and open it up to any questions or thoughts that you have as a board.
Well, I appreciate the overview very much. And, you know, we spent, as for those who were here at the last meeting, we spent a goodly amount of time at the May fifteenth meeting. So today's overview and the detailed discussion at that meeting really helped a lot. I, I'm prepared to, to support this plan. I mean, I certainly support the overall goal of the, the plan. And, um, I've been convinced in recent weeks that, um, while it won't be perfect on day one, and there'll be tweaks to be made that, but those tweaks will be made with the input of all staff and, and the plan that we see today involve many staff, um, and its implementation. Um, and I, and I am convinced it will provide more context for students and parents and, and staff, which is our goal. Um, so thank you for the, the review. And I'm delighted to hear that your, one of your early plans as principal will be to start a, a parent advisory committee specific for this new, this new structure. So thanks for jumping on that.
All the board members.
I know it's early because we haven't started on it yet, but I wanted to know if you've already started to think, and sorry, Joe, you don't have to have an answer to this right now because you're brand new, but, um, if you've thought about ways that you're going to measure your progress, how long you're going to give yourself to measure it? I mean, because this is presumably something that we can keep in place for, you know, indefinitely if it's working, but how long will you give yourselves to figure out what tweaks to make and if it's not working?
Yeah. One of the things that was, uh, uh, I was reminded of and, and in the PBIS booster training for the past two days is the importance of ongoing data use and effective data use to drive, uh, program development. Uh, and so, and then constantly you, uh, working with the data and sharing the data with all stakeholders to talk about, um, areas of improvement, areas of, uh, focus, areas of change that we need, and tweaks, as you mentioned, that we need to make. And so I envision our school teams that are working directly on this plan, me, uh, this group that we're kind of, have tentatively named Student Services Department or Student Services, uh, team will be, we are already going to be meeting weekly, um, to be reviewing data and making sure that we are operationalizing it in a, in a consistent way across the grade levels, across positions, uh, and, and constantly monitoring data, but also providing monthly opportunities for staff to see data. And so one of the important pieces for data use would be comparing to previous years by month, by type of infraction, by, uh, uh, type of, location of the infraction, and measuring it in comparison to last year, but also previous years to see, the goal would be to see a decrease in inappropriate behaviors and, uh, an increase in staff morale through surveying, an increase in student, the, the student PBIS survey that's given, um, can be given regularly as a, like a self-assessment of, do I have relationships with staff? Do I feel safe in school? A lot of those different data points can be used and will be used on an ongoing basis to drive the ongoing work as we go. And so data and data use is going to be critical and, um, ensuring that it's working. And so ultimately, the ultimate goal is reduction in student misbehaviors and increase in school culture and climate and feeling of positivity and on those kind of self-assessment surveys, uh, and an increase in, in student learning and academics as well. Uh, but one of the easy to go-to data points would be ODRs, types of behaviors, are they reducing across grade levels? Are they reducing in comparison to the previous year? Are we seeing repeat issues with individual students or repeat types of issues reduce or go down? And if not, then we'll be adjusting ongoing.
Then my second part to that was, um, and I've wondered this actually all through the process with both you guys and with the high school is, do you have any models? Have you been researching since we've all started talking about this, models from other districts, other countries even, in your case, Joe, um, where, you know, you've seen successful models and think, giving you ideas of what you can do with this?
Yeah. One, one most recent one that I've been researching along with Linda Gibbons, um, she was at one of the national PBIS conferences recently and provided, um, several contacts to schools that have done similar work, similar restructuring. There's a school out of New York that completely restructured and removed deans and removed their disciplinary structure from punitive to restorative, um, and are working through similar types of processes where they're having, uh, a lot of mindfulness training for staff, mindfulness rooms for students, um, restorative practices embedded in their culture and climate in regards to how they're engaging with students after conflicts, but also at the universal level. Uh, and so we've already, I've already reached out to the administration at school to talk with them about the work that they're doing. They created an online platform for their, uh, monitoring of this system and also the monitoring of the, the, um, not just the data in terms of ODRs, but the operationalizing how staff members can request assistance, the types of assistance that's needed for different students, um, and really building in supports at every level of the tiered system. And so there's that school in New York, there's a lot of schools in Oakland that was referred to last time that, uh, had been doing restorative practices work for, for a number of years that, uh, haven't read as much about as I have this most recent school in New York. There are some models and examples that are going on across the country that have moved away from traditional dean or, um, just administrative roles to more, uh, restorative and, and mental health, uh, socio-emotional supports in the classrooms and in like tier two support groups.
Could you explain to me a little bit about, uh, I see in parentheses on a couple of these, it says shifting current faculty positions?
So the, the shifting is the dean positions, um, and shifting those into different types of roles, the actual FTE, full-time equivalency.
Okay. So are they currently training to the restorative practice facilitators as them, as the role in deans, or would that be more training for them?
To a certain extent, it would be more training, but actually, um, we believe one of our RPFs is actually going to be our current, uh, restorative practice facilitator. Like, we have one right now in the building. And so, uh, we're strongly considering transitioning her into being one of them. But it, depending on who we hire, uh, if approved, um, it probably will be additional training for a couple of them.
Okay, thank you. Ruth Ann, you have anything, or Paul?
Could you speak to the trauma-informed piece, uh, how, how staff training would be done with that? If there's going to be somebody responsible in the building for providing supports for students, uh, who are undergoing trauma?
Yeah. I envision a, um, the, the, the plan being one specific administrator, um, probably me, uh, as principal overseeing the student services team, um, so the same of people per grade level, uh, working with the grade level administrators and implementation, but me working directly with this team and all of the social workers, social work training and mental health training have been, part of their training is in trauma-informed practices. But also, we've, most recently, as a district, worked with Karen Sims from, I can't remember the group that she's from.
Courageful connections?
Champagne Urbana Neighborhood Champions.
There we go. And she just presented to the district's, um, school improvement teams on Friday and is committed to continuing that work with us. And so I plan on overseeing the student services team, um, weekly meetings, ensuring that trauma-informed practices are taking place at every level, but especially the tier two and tier three levels of student supports as needed. Um, and so the ongoing implementation and consistency across grade levels is where I see my role being critical as principal, to ensure that the grade levels are all aligned, that we're doing, practices are consistent, and that parents and families have a consistent process in place for this whole system. Um, and so that's, that's my role as principal.
My question to you is for you and for Patrick and Shauna, this room that all these kids of color are put in, does that mean a decrease, decrease in that? Because if that's not the case, you're not doing what you said you were going to do. That room is full all the time because so-and-so looked at them the wrong way, or so-and-so had a hat on, or you don't know what's happening in their homes. So this really, I mean, when you talk about trauma, you're talking trauma. And so people who are not trained in it and don't understand it need to learn more about it. Not leave, but be there to understand what each individual kid. So I'm asking you three, that room going to be empty by the end of next year? No kids?
That's our goal, yes. Yes, our goal is that every classroom.
That's my concern.
Students are in class, engaged, and on task and learning, and teachers and staff, and we are wrapping around students and teachers in ways that are supportive.
Instead of taking them out of the environment?
Yes.
Okay.
And I would say one of the pieces of the training from Karen Sims that's been really powerful is, is racialized trauma and how, um, current day and historical forms of racism are actual byproducts of that, are, are current impacts of trauma, complex trauma. And so ensuring that we are working to, to create spaces in school where kids are accepted, where kids are embraced, where kids are welcome, where kids are engaged and challenged and pushed.
The classroom should be like that.
That's right. That's right.
Or, or no space.
And what this plan provides is, that's what I mean by space, classroom spaces.
Oh, okay.
This plan is a way to wrap around teachers and kids in a more supportive way, a more restorative way. And not a punitive system that's pulling kids out and sending them to separate rooms.
Okay.
Um, one of the most significant parts of, uh, the proposal that we've been talking about in terms of how it's actually going to look when it's up and running, is that we're strongly considering moving towards a push-in model as opposed to sending a student out. Okay, so, so when you reference like lots of kids being sent into a room for behavior reasons, that should be dramatically less because even if there is a student that's exhibiting a behavior that is considered being disruptive, that student won't be sent to the dean, that student will not be sent to refocus, a teacher will have the, uh, ability to call and just have someone trained to come and either meet with the student or take over the class while the teacher has a more isolated, restorative conversation with the student. So that, that should really decrease having lots of students that have been misbehaving, hanging out in a room like you were speaking about.
Okay, and the other question is also, I'm going to address this, students with disabilities should not be pulled out either. If those teachers and staff are not understanding the children with these disabilities, that's part of trauma too, because then they're stigmatized. So I think that piece needs to be, because those kids come from the elementary over there too. And if I'm looking right in that room, some of that stigma was in there. I'm not only talking about color, I'm talking about children who are autistic or Down Syndrome or have mental illness that we don't understand. So all those, that whole picture has to be looked at.
I'm with you. And, and we envision, I envision, uh, a, a, a school that is qualitatively different, that is, that is fundamentally, uh, a, a place where families and kids and staff across the community are love Urbana Middle School, love coming to Urbana Middle School, are excited, are engaged, are enthralled with what they're doing in school. And that takes a lot of this type of work to, to do that. And the professional development that we need to provide in the classroom, job embedded work, has to be coupled, it goes both ways, coupled with the monthly ongoing trainings with the whole staff, with grade levels of staff, with, with folks in the community that are, that are experts in these areas, working with us, but also sometimes the disconnect is we go to trainings, we go to professional development sessions, we understand it theoretically, and then we can't, we struggle implementing it. What this plan does is it takes the theoretical understanding and applies it in a supportive way, side by side with the teacher, side by side with the students. And that's what we envision with this moving forward, something qualitatively new.
Well, that was kind of my thought process is that, eh, some of these teachers should already know these things with all the trainings they go to. I mean, they should really understand and be able to communicate with these children. That is my thinking. I mean, there are lots and lots of trainings that our teachers go to.
Yeah.
And I would think that they're getting something out of it.
Yeah. One of the things I would say is our teachers are, work extremely hard. And the job today as a teacher is extremely difficult. Um, and so our job as, as building administrators, as the leader of the school, is to ensure that we are wrapping around our teachers in ways that what we expect our teachers to do with students, expect high expectations to support them to get there, we need to do with our teachers. And I believe our teachers all have the best interests in mind for our students. We just have to provide the support for them and believe in them to, to be able to... just have to provide the support for them and believe in them to, to be able to do it, and push them, and, and expect the pushback as well.
I believe so too, but I also believe that all of these things should have already been in place to support teachers, because they're on the ground every day. They need these support things, and they should have had them all along, in my opinion.
As the hopefully future principal of Urbana Middle School, I can't go back and change the past, but I can make sure that we change the present and the future. And that's one important goal.
I move approval of 10.03.
Member Carter?
No.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Pulaski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes, and Vice President Rollins gay.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Ms. Shear, Dr. Wemel. You ready for the next?
Yes, I think this one, the administrative personnel items, we, John, by Don?
Yep, I'd like to introduce and invite, as I introduce each person up to the microphone, just to give a quick hello of welcome. And so I'm not gonna tell you the order I'm gonna do them in, so you're just gonna have to guess. First one up is Mr. M.C. Neal, who's our new Director of Information Technology and Data Analytics. Mr. Neal comes from Urbana Free Library, where he served as the Information Technology Manager for four years. Prior to that, he held positions with the University of Illinois, City of Champagne, and Dell Computers. He's been living in the central Illinois area for the past nineteen years, and during this time, he's earned a Master's of Library and Information Science from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign in 2016. In 2013, he earned a Bachelor of Science from Eastern Illinois University in Organizational Development, and his associate's degree from Parkland College was in Network Administration. He was a chapter president of Phi Theta Kappa National Honor Society and the keynote speaker from the Parkland commencement ceremony in 2011. Mr. Neal, welcome to Urbana.
Thank you, uh, thank you, board members. I specifically asked if I would have to say something, and I was told, no. So, um, what I will say is I'm, I'm very, very excited to be on board, um, doing what I can to help the technology team strengthen the technology infrastructure and the products and services that we provide to the district. We've already been making some strides towards that end, and I am optimistic for the future.
Thank you, didn't mean to put you on the spot, but wonderful job. Okay, so now everyone has a heads up. So the next person is our new Associate Principal of Urbana High School. Urbana School District 116 is pleased to introduce Ms. Janice Nolan as our new Associate Principal of Urbana High School. Ms. Nolan actually just earned her doctorate degree, is Ms. Nolan here today? No, she's not. Dr. Nolan earned her, her doctorate degree actually just recently. She's expecting to actually get her hood this month, so I will, I will refer to her as Dr. Nolan. This position was created by the reorganization of UHS and approved by the board recently. Urbana High School welcomes Dr. Nolan from Crystal House Academy in Indianapolis, where she served as Assistant Principal for their pre-K through 12th grade program since 2017. She taught in Indianapolis Public Schools since August of 2014, and prior to her elementary and secondary education experience, she was the Director of the Department of English Language Learners at Perry Street Preparatory in Washington DC from 2008 to 2014. Dr. Nolan's also been a corporate trainer and adjunct professor in higher education. Dr. Nolan's academic career includes an anticipated doctorate in Law and Policy, LPD, from Northeastern University in Boston, Massachusetts, that's, as I said, conferred later this month, a Master's of Science and Educational Leadership from Columbia University, October 2015, a Master's of Arts in Spanish and Latin American Studies from American University in 2002, and a Master in Teaching and Education from Trinity University in 2000, and a Bachelor of Arts dual degree in Education and Spanish from Howard in 1995. So we will welcome Ms. Nolan to a future board meeting. I will say that she attended some of our professional development last week, and so she got to meet many members of the Urbana High School staff. Next up is Ms. Dolores Brown. And Ms. Brown is our new Urbana High School Vice Principal. Prior to coming to Urbana, Ms. Dolores Brown has been employed at Stephen Decatur Middle School as principal. In this leadership position, Ms. Brown has done an excellent job in coordinating programs and services that have resulted in providing an academic climate that is conducive to maximum educational development. In the last two years, the middle school has shown academic gains and climate improvement at all grade levels that would only be possible through the cooperation and support of her teachers. She places great importance on being visible in classrooms, hallways, and almost all athletic events. She requires all of her administrative team to continually engage with staff, students, and parents in order to promote a supportive and collaborative culture. Ms. Brown spends most evenings calling parents to discuss concerns and challenges, yet also makes it a priority to discuss student triumphs and successes. She also spends many evenings mentoring staff members on successful strategies to engage our students and to attain a supportive classroom environment. Her vision of pursuit of student success is evident in the professional development that she provides for all of her staff. Her academic career includes earning a Master's of Science in Educational Administration from Illinois State University in 2010, a Bachelor of Science in History Education and Political Science from Illinois State University in 2007. Ms. Brown is currently a doctoral student at Illinois State University, working towards an EDD. She is awarded the Illinois State University Educational Administration and Foundation's Principal of the Year in 2016, and the Foundation's Patricia H. Kloss and Linda L. Lyman endowed scholarship for 2015, 2016. Ms. Brown, welcome to Urbana School District.
That was a lot to read, but thank you, I appreciate that. But it's an honor and a privilege to serve this community, and I'm just excited in this new endeavor, and I'm ready to start.
All right, great, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Up next is the newest member of the middle school's administrative team, Vice Principal of Urbana Middle School, Dr. Micah Jackson. Dr. Jackson will start on July 1st, 2018. Urbana Middle School welcomes Dr. Jackson from Booker T. Washington Elementary School in Champagne, where she was most recently as Assistant Principal. Before that role, she was a teacher at Franklin Middle School in Champagne, starting in 2007. She's taught a wide variety of subjects for various educational organizations in our community, including Advanced Placement History with Operation Hope Junior, oh, Junior Entrepreneurship and the Principal Scholars Program, and African-American History for Freedom School. Dr. Jackson's academic career includes recently completing her Doctorate of Philosophy and Educational Policy Studies from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, May 2018. She also earned her Master's of Education, Educational Policy Studies, and a General Administration Certificate from the University of Illinois. Her Bachelor of Arts in History was earned in 2007 from Western Illinois University. Dr. Jackson, welcome to Urbana School District.
Good evening, I want to say thank you so much for the consideration and the opportunity, and I look forward to working with everyone, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And finally, someone who's already been at the microphone tonight, the new principal of Urbana Middle School, Dr. Joseph Wemel.
All right.
Since 2017, Dr. Wemel has been Director of Equity and Secondary Bilingual Programs. Dr. Wemel will officially begin his duties at Urbana Middle School on July 1st, but as he said, he's already been working with middle school staff. Dr. Wemel is currently the Director of Equity and Secondary Bilingual Programs, which was a job title change from his previous position of Director of Equity and Student Learning, Bilingual and Multicultural Programs, a position that he's held since August of 2009. With the exception of 2012, 2013, when he served as interim principal of Urbana High School, he's also served as interim principal of Wiley since March of this year. He was a sixth to eighth grade bilingual English and math teacher at Urbana Middle School. He was also a kindergarten to eighth grade bilingual English and language teacher in Decatur Public Schools prior to joining Urbana School District 116. Dr. Wemel earned his doctorate in Education and Educational Policy Organization and Leadership in 2014 from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. He earned his Master's in Education, Educational Organization and Leadership from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign in 2009, and his Bachelor of Science from Millikan University in 2004. Dr. Wemel, welcome.
I will echo my colleagues before saying how excited I am and honored to be serving in this role. We have some exciting changes, and with change brings great opportunity, and I look forward to helping lead the work that we're doing at Urbana Middle School, and I'm very excited, so thank you very much for this opportunity. Thank you.
So now, for these marvelous new staff that we have, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, at this time, Ruthanne, roll call.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Pulaski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes, and Vice President Rollins gay.
Yes. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to 11.0, the study topic, I'm gonna give that to you, Don.
Yep, I'll bring up Ms. Chris Vowles and Mr. Brian Anderson, Principal of Yankee Ridge, and Ms. Chris Vowles is Principal of Urbana Early Childhood School, to discuss the expansion of the early childhood grant programs, and they'll provide an update and recommendation for the expansion of early childhood. There's no action to be taken on this item tonight, but this is a study topic.
Hello, everybody. So I just put a couple things together to summarize the expansion grant and how it's just a little bit different than what the, what we currently have in our Preschool For All. As you know, our preschool services in the state of Illinois are all grant-funded. What we currently have is a Preschool For All grant. We've had that since 1986, it's a half-day program. We serve 360 students, half of them in the morning and half of them in the afternoon. So this particular grant opportunity came along last year. The state of Illinois has been working closely with the federal government to expand options available to preschoolers, because the research shows that the stronger the preschool preparation for students, the better that they'll be in kindergarten, and the more success that they'll have as students in general. So that is the goal of the state, and the federal government is to get more preschool opportunities out there, particularly for students who are at risk, and students who don't have opportunities otherwise. So some key components from the preschool expansion grant that's a little bit different than the preschool for all, is that, once again, it's to expand high-quality preschool programs in high-need communities. Full-day blended classrooms is a huge piece of this. They want, they want not only preschool opportunities, but full-day opportunities for children, and they are recommending blended classrooms, which is what we've always provided here in Urbana. Blended classrooms means students with special education services are educated in the same classroom as students who do not need the special education services. The preschool for expansion grant asks that the majority of the students accessing those full-day classrooms be four-year-old students, so it really is a preparation in, for kindergarten. And that we create sustainable programs by coordinating existing early learning funds. So this includes using what the resources our district already has access to, the preschool for all, and any other community resources that we use, including special ed, community resources, those sorts of things, to put together a comprehensive program so that it's, that it can be sustainable into the future. It emphasizes the alignment of preschool programs, first to third grade continuum of services. So the preschool for all expansion grant really is looking at comprehensive services from the time that a child is born, with particularly families who, once again, are considered at risk, who struggle because the environment isn't supporting them, or opportunities aren't there for them, through third grade. So these are services that when we put staff in place, and programs in place, and practices in place, that we work collaboratively to make sure that this, these children have the best opportunities possible, from the time that they're identified, all the way up through third grade, and even beyond there. It also puts in supports for mental health and wellness for not only the children, but the families as well. One of the things is that each family that we work with, with our expansion grant, have family goals, and that we put in supports to help them meet their goals. So for example, if one of the family member, the parent, says that he or she wants to go back to school to earn a GED, or access college courses, or perhaps get a job, then it is our obligation to help them do that. Talk about how to build a resume, help them sign up for classes, see what they need to get into those college programs. And once again, this comes up over and over again in the grant, are community collaborations. That includes access to our libraries, access to daycare services when they need it, and other things that will support them, WICs, SNAP, or any other things that we have in place that are gonna provide that high-quality service for families who need them. So as you know, Brian and I have talked about putting the preschool expansion classes in Yankee Ridge, and there are a few advantages that we've identified for that. This is a new opportunity for Yankee Ridge, it's a new opportunity for us, and we feel that it's a good time to look at the resources that we have, the needs of Yankee Ridge, the needs of the early childhood expansion grant, and try to start a new system right off the bat that's gonna benefit everyone. The alignment and efficiency of services for our Francophone families and classrooms is one of those. So with the dual-language French-speaking families going into Yankee Ridge, here at early childhood right now, we have almost 20 French-speaking students at the pre-K level. So sharing those support staff and the services between the two programs makes really good sense. It's very hard to find French-speaking licensed staff to help meet the needs of our families, and so having them in one location would really help, help with all of that. We also identified sharing physical resources and personnel, such as a secretary, playground equipment, mental health specialists, and our French-speaking family coordinator. These are services that are already identified and requested through the grant that we think would benefit not only our pre-K students, but certainly the Yankee Ridge families as well. Share professional development activities, one of the things that we're looking at are the, that trauma-informed teaching and learning, and that's also something that Yank, Brian's looking at for Yankee Ridge. And sharing those professional development opportunities is something we think we can do together, work well together with. We also think it's a great opportunity for our pre-K students to go to the same school, the elementary school that their, their siblings go to. So we would identify the Yankee Ridge four-year-olds to attend these classrooms first, and we would expect a smooth transition for them straight into kindergarten. I think I missed into the PowerPoint, we're looking at two classrooms with 17 students each, so the preschool for all expansion grant would pay for 30, the education of 34 students in a full-day preschool program.
And as Chris mentioned, it's a wonderful opportunity. As the building principal of Yankee Ridge, I think it would benefit all our students, especially the children that go through the early childhood program. We currently have 33 students that will be coming to us next year from early childhood. They will be kindergartners in our building, and Chris mentioned there's 34 slots, so had we had this program in place this year, we would know those students very well, and they would know Yankee Ridge very well. One of the questions that came up recently about a week and a half ago with a parent forum that we held, was what about space at Yankee Ridge? And I want to reassure everyone that there are spaces that we have available for the early childhood classes. early childhood classes. You see here with our expanded, remodeled building, you can see the two early childhood rooms would be located right there where it says EC. Those rooms were initially allocated for the after-school program. However, we could easily move the after-school program up towards the new gymnasium, as well as using the multipurpose room on a regular basis. So, the two early childhood rooms would be right there, across from restrooms, and also close to door access to get the students into the building, in and out of the building as needed for arrival, dismissal, and recess, those types of things. So, again, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for Yankee Ridge, and I'd love to see the program come to our building. Any questions?
Any questions, Board?
I'm not familiar with the after-school program at Lille. Does it have a separate special room that Yankee Ridge traditionally has had, or how is it housed at Lille?
So, the program at Lille actually has an office and a small classroom that is shared with music, and then they use the multipurpose room and the gym as their main areas. They do not have a classroom space as such.
At Yankee Ridge, the coordinator would share a office with our new PE teacher. One of the benefits of sharing that office is, one, it's fairly large as offices come, and also it has a window that looks out into the gymnasium. So, quite honestly, if the early childhood program does not come our way, we're still looking to possibly make that change, just to ensure that the coordinator can supervise students while remaining in her office and working with students individually, and also processing some of her administrative requirements as well.
So, let me just get you to clarify. If it didn't go, if the early childhood didn't go there, you would still put the after-school program person in the gym, and so what would those two classrooms be used for instead?
They would be flex classrooms, you know, as needed for events, like we have a family event. We could have the check-in be in those classrooms, but we wouldn't have a dedicated purpose for those rooms.
Well, I came prepared to talk about how I viewed this expansion, and let me just clarify. Are we approved for the expansion, or we just assumed that it's coming, the ECE program expansion?
We haven't gotten the final word from the state yet.
Okay.
However, a recent conversation with my consultant, our consultant from ISBE says that she's expecting us to be approved.
Okay.
I expect to have word, final word, this week.
Okay. I trust you. Anyway, I was prepared to come and to say that I view the location of these two new classrooms as temporary, largely because I, you know, we built an award-winning early childhood facility back in 2011 that was designed for young children, both indoor and out, that has, you know, the whole host of support staff there to support the needs of early childhood families and children, and, you know, and staff, and it's optimal to have that work together. And if you remember, you know, back when we designed the site plan, while we didn't have money to actually provide for another village, we did pick a site that would allow us to do so, because we anticipated that the state would start, you know, early childhood funding would start to flow from the state and the federal government again, because it had been, then it stopped. So, I was prepared to come tonight to say that I see this as temporary. Obviously, we need to put these classrooms somewhere. Yankee Ridge makes sense, but that I would hope that our long-term goal, and not too far down the road, would be that we would find a way to do what we originally had intended back in 2011, which is put all of our early childhood efforts into a program that was designed for children, both indoors and out. But what I'm hearing you both say tonight is that you see the trade-off is worth putting young children at Yankee Ridge, the trade-off of having a space that's not specifically designed both either indoors or out for young children, and having them separated from the rest of your staff who are at the Washington Avenue site, is worth it because this program sounds like it's quite different from the one in Washington, and because of the high number of French-speaking families that will be coming into this program.
So, you hit all those key points. So, it is somewhat different than what we currently offer, but first of all, let me say, we hope that those four extra classrooms also get added because we have a waiting list of almost 100 students. So, whether we serve them full-day or half-day, we still need to reach our community and get students into school so that they're ready to learn as kindergartners. So, those four classrooms will always be welcome, and whether they end up being full-day classrooms or part-day classrooms, we would still be meeting kids' needs. So, one of the things I have learned recently from the state and the federal government is that the number of preschool students that districts are gonna be required to serve is gonna continue to rise, because that's best practice. It's what needs to happen. So, putting full-day classrooms in those four extra classrooms would still be good. We could still make sure that the advantage of that is those could be classrooms that also would serve Dr. Williams, because, once again, it's that access to an elementary school where their siblings go, all those same advantages that we would have should we go to Yankee Ridge now. That dual-language French component is important, because we have to serve those families, and so does the Yankee Ridge staff. And so, making it an efficient use of resources is really a smart thing, and since we need to find space, let's do it in a smart way, an efficient way, and use our resources to reach families in the best way that we can. So, yes, I'm not seeing, I personally, and Brian and I have never talked about this, I don't see the Yankee Ridge thing being a temporary thing, but that's not to say we don't need those four other classrooms as well, and we could make use of all of that.
And the fact that the outdoor space wasn't really designed with pre-K children in mind. I mean, I realize there's not a huge difference between a four and a five-year-old, but, I mean, we're not talking three-year-olds, but, you know.
There is money in this grant to add playground equipment. In fact, several of the local districts who have gotten the 2018 preschool for all expansion grant, a chunk of their money went to making their elementary school playgrounds accessible and more appropriate for smaller children and for children with disabilities. So, that is something else we could bring to the table that would support all of the children at Yankee Ridge, particularly at the younger age.
Chris, you've talked about how you want to keep the siblings together. We currently do that, I believe, in our school district. Am I right thinking that, that if a sibling goes to Yankee Ridge or Thomas Paine, then their sibling will go there also?
As best we can, yes.
Okay. I just want to clarify that, because there could be some of these families that might be moving into our other schools also.
Absolutely.
So, Yankee Ridge is not the main area where all these families are gonna go when they finish the early childhood. I mean, they could go to where their siblings go.
Yes, we would expect them to.
So, you know.
Yes.
I just want to clarify, because we have other schools in the district, too. So, you know, even though we've done a huge update to Yankee Ridge, we do have other schools, so they might not all be going to Yankee Ridge for kindergarten.
Right. We're only looking at putting four-year-olds that are from the neighborhood of Yankee Ridge into those slots initially. So, we would target the Yankee Ridge siblings to go into those 34 slots.
Okay, because we sat here at one meeting, and it was my understanding that a lot of the families lived around the Wiley district.
Actually, we have fewer students going to Wiley next year than we do to Yankee Ridge.
Okay, thanks.
So, I'm assuming that this isn't the plan for next year. We haven't already said we're gonna be four classrooms at one and four classrooms at K next year?
We have posted positions for a fourth, I'm sorry, a third class in third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade.
Oh, wow.
And in first grade, we've posted a position for that fourth classroom, three being monolingual and one being French dual-language. So, the only one that does not apply currently would be second grade. We're still viewing those numbers and looking at enrollment, and that would really even give us another room if we weren't three-strand, but I didn't initially present that, because I wanted you to see the possibility that we have the capacity.
So, I guess I'm trying to figure out, you know, if we really do fill this building up, what content plans are gonna be in place, I guess, to alleviate that.
So, I can partially answer that, and Dr. Bindum, if you want to jump in, you can too. One of the things that we've been working with Mr. Anderson on is ensuring that we're ready for the potential of additional students coming in, but also the approval of putting the French dual-language program there allowed us to ensure that we can fill out those upper-grade classes. And so, right now, the projected enrollment in those classes is actually gonna be below the district average, and so those are gonna be smaller classrooms with quite a bit of wiggle room to grow. They're gonna be well below the class size limit set in the CBA, and that's with our anticipated numbers coming in. And so, we have quite a bit of room there. I don't think that the total building enrollment will even come close to what would essentially be the capacity of the building with that configuration, which would be 495 students. Our enrollment projections don't even come close to that right now. So, we'll cross that bridge when it comes, I guess, is part of my answer, but then my other answer would be, I believe we would manage it in a way similar to the way we've managed Dr. Williams, which is rather than ask the board to go through a full-scale redistricting, we would use the current petitioning process and put in what we termed last year, soft caps at Dr. Williams. I really don't anticipate that happening at Yankee Ridge next year or even the year after, but that would probably be the short-term administrative solution to that concern.
Another question. So, before we voted on the dual-language program going to Yankee Ridge, let's remove that from the equation of why you thought this would be a good place to put it, and the build. Those two factors being removed, what process of elimination or deduction did you use to decide that the other schools in the district were not the best place to put early childhood?
Honestly, it was because of the build, that I first approached Brian and said, look, we have this opportunity to serve more students in our district. You're building this new space. We'd love to get in on this, because we think full-day classrooms are what our community need, and at that time, it was the only space I knew of that would possibly be available to put two classrooms. So, I was unaware of the French dual-language program decision-making at that time or opportunity, but, so it was last October when I started writing the grant for the preschool expansion, and I approached Brian because of the build.
Okay, but so, can you see any other buildings? I mean, with that aside, are there places that could potentially house it? I mean, we said in our last meeting that all of our buildings are supposed to be compliant for four-year-olds, presumably their state requirement, right? So, you know, I'm just trying to look at all of our buildings, because I worry. I know it sounds comfortable that we've, I mean, that Don said it's a comfortable, you know, cap that we've got right now. I'm just worried with the new build, as John has said in previous meetings, you know, if you build it, they will come, and I just don't want to get into a situation where we're packed, full to the gills, you know, in three years' time. So, I just want to, I want to do due diligence by all the other buildings that could potentially house early childhood, just to know that this is the very best decision to make.
Well, I guess I need to ask Sam and Don. I mean, as far as I know, the other buildings are full as well, and moving us in would also tighten their, you know, tighten the space up for them as well, and we would still need to bring in some playground equipment that would be appropriate for three- and four-year-olds, and we would certainly need to look at buildings that are accessible and those sorts of things, but I personally did not approach other administrators.
I do know that when this discussion reached the board level, we did go back and kind of go through a process where we looked at each of the buildings, and all of the other elementary schools would involve some level of staff shift in order to, and student shift in order to accommodate these two classrooms. I think Wiley was the closest we could get. They're not empty rooms right now, because we have interventionists doubling up in one of the rooms, but Wiley would probably be the closest that I think we had, and I don't remember Samuel if that was.
And I don't know if it worked well, but you have preschool at Wiley, do you?
Yes, I also thought we had some space at Thomas Paine, too, from the last time we got attendance numbers.
Yeah, I wouldn't say Thomas Paine would be a.
Yeah, just your mic.
Your mic.
Yeah, and looking at Thomas Paine, I wouldn't say that that would be a feasible model as it stands. Looking at enrollment for next year, I anticipate another class being added, and so that's taking up another classroom. And since it is that we still are anticipating a soft cap for Dr. Williams as well, I think adding additional, you know, students at Thomas Paine would provide some additional challenges or difficulties.
And Wiley?
Yeah, and looking at Wiley, there's maybe one classroom. I don't know if that's a long-term solution, and that's why I was mentioning our Wiley principal being here. When I looked at it preliminarily and looked at the enrollment, because it is only a two-strand school, adding in those additional early childhood classrooms would create some additional complications, just based on space alone. So, in looking at space and enrollment, and I know we talked about before, the size of Yankee Ridge overall, minus, you know, any soft cap petition, all those things, Yankee Ridge actually has the biggest footprint to accommodate any additional programming currently, and in looking at enrollment, would be able to manage that as well.
The other thing that I was, I know at one point, Chris, you did say that the grant, if we do get it, does allow for some construction also. Is that correct?
No. No, it's just strictly programming. It does not allow for brick-and-order.
So, the outdoor equipment is considered.
Playground equipment, yes.
Programming?
Yes, yes, because we're required to provide so much gross motor.
And what about the restrooms? Because I thought we were talking at one point that you said that there would be grant money to accommodate the restrooms, because the restrooms in those two classrooms are not for children, you know.
Well, the grant would not pay for modification of the restrooms, no.
Okay.
Yeah, and for clarity, there are not restrooms in those particular classrooms. There's restrooms across the hall that students currently use.
All right. Thank you.
Unless somebody else?
I need to go back. I really thought I had my listening ears on, and I have a feeling I didn't pick up on something, or maybe I did. There are how many children on the waitlist right now?
I would have to look, but typically, this time of year, we have anywhere between 50 and 100. So, I would have to go back and count.
And for the two classrooms that have been identified, what would be each room's population size?
17, so we're looking at moving 34, giving opportunity for 34 students to have full-day classrooms.
34. And then, something was said about the students that would go to have class in those, and did I understand something about that they would be children that would be coming into Yankee Ridge as they progress out?
I've mentioned, as an example, I've mentioned this upcoming year, we have 33 students that will be joining us in kindergarten from early childhood.
This year.
It fluctuates every.
From.
Yeah, it fluctuates every year, but that's an example that quite a large number of those students are four-year-olds that will be coming into Yankee Ridge.
That's coming out. I'm still trying to figure out now, that you've clarified that point, what it was I thought I was hearing about the students that would become the early childhood students in those rooms. what it was I thought I was hearing about the students that would become the early childhood students in those rooms.
Well, I think, Chris, that's something that you would target the students who are in the Yankee Ridge boundary area.
Okay, that's what it said. So, are those 33 students that would be Yankee Ridge neighborhood kids, they are the first 33 at the top of the waitlist?
No, so, our waiting list, so, we do a screening process to enroll children in our school. And we are required to take children with the, that we can support the best first off the list. That includes by age. So our, the students who are older, the four-year-olds, get in first. Students with special needs get in as well. And students who have a number of at-risk factors also get into our school before families who don't have as great as need. And so our waiting list right now is three-year-olds because we were able to get all of our four-year-olds in. So that's, and it changes every year according to the needs of the families that we screen and our spaces that are available. So what we, so, the grant is written that four-year-olds will get top priority to go into the expansion classrooms, full-day classrooms, because that's one of the requirements of the grant. And that we would target the four-year-olds for whom that's their neighborhood school. It could be children currently enrolled in our school that those families would have an opportunity to move to a full-day option. And it could be children that we've not yet screened. But we would place Yankee Ridge students in the full-day classroom first because it's their neighborhood school and it makes sense to get them prepared to go to their neighborhood school in kindergarten. And so we would look at those families first for those classroom placements. And that includes the French-speaking families because that's their neighborhood school now. And so it would include all of those children that would get priority to Yankee Ridge School in, if the full-day expansion classrooms went there. If it ends up in another school, we will prioritize those students for that neighborhood school. Four-year-olds particularly because that's what we need to do to provide the best service.
But they would still have to be selected by those other elements that you're talking about?
Yes.
So it might not all be just Yankee Ridge neighborhood children in the end?
We, we would target the Yankee Ridge students first, absolutely. But yes, if those slots are not full, we're not going to leave them vacant. Because we have families in our school who certainly could benefit from full-day services. And they, and if there are open slots for a full-day program, we're going to fill them, whether or not they're the neighborhood school children.
Okay, thank you. Minutes?
No, I just want to thank Chris for working hard to get this grant opportunity, early childhood funding for our district. Appreciate that. I know that takes a lot of time, you and your staff, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We'll bring this back for action from the board at the next board meeting. And by then, we will probably know for sure, we'll have a letter from the state at that time about funding. So, thank you.
Okay, the call for, and thank you, call for future and special executive meetings. There is a special meeting scheduled for June 15, 2018. This meeting is for the purpose of board retreat with Patrick Rice from the Illinois School Board Association. So now, Don, do you have a superintendent's report?
Yeah, I do. Like to first start with something that's been mentioned a few times. When we talk about equity in action, I'd like to give a shout-out to our equity leadership team of Natalie, Kathy, Samuel, Matt Stark, Lupe, Ian, Joe, Shawna, and Yavanda, who did an amazing job with the Three Days of Professional Development last week that, that were, as one of the teacher participants said, probably one of the most meaningful professional development opportunities that they've seen in many years. The week started on May 30 with our Equity Institute that we held for, basically opened up to anyone in the district. It was attended on a voluntary basis by almost 200 people. Our focus there was working on kind of the broad history of where racial inequities come from, how we as educators deal with racial bias and issues of white supremacy in our schools and in our society. And that, that ended with a large fishbowl activity in which a lot of people shared a lot of truths and concerns about what they saw as the lived experiences of students, educators, and families in this community. That led into the next day, May 31, which was our Equity Cohort Day, where it was a continuation of work that our approximately 90, 75 to 90 teachers who, who signed up for an ongoing equity session throughout the year after school kind of came together in a workshop-like session in which we had speakers talk about everything from colorblind ideologies within the classroom setting to restorative solutions around issues of race and restorative circles and racial equity. And we also had Karen Sims talking about trauma-informed care and how students can become invisible in classrooms. And Dr. Alice Lee, understanding and inviting African-American language into the classroom. There was also a community panel of students and family members who are immigrants to this community. And again, a very powerful day of learning that led into June 1, which was our Day of Continuous Improvement, where all of the school improvement teams from across the district gathered for a morning keynote session with Karen Sims on trauma-informed care. And then spent time working in their, building leadership teams on their continuous improvement plans, assessing the data from last year through an equity lens and making plans for next year. So that was our Equity in Action. For Excellence in Action, I just want to give a shout-out again to May 25. On graduation, we had an amazing ceremony. Three wonderful student speakers, one of whom was from Adult Education. All of them had very compelling stories and were very, very inspirational, I would say. And over 300 UHS graduates, including students from Adult Education who received their Urbana High School diploma for completing high school equivalency programs here at Adult Education. And also Excellence in Action, I want to give a, kind of a commercial for the Urbana Pops, which is one of our partner organizations. They're a local professional orchestra that plays pop, popular music. And on June 9 at 7:00 PM, they will be performing at Cobb Auditorium at Urbana High School. One of the things that makes Urbana Pops a partner of ours is they always reserve a certain percentage of their seats of their orchestra for Urbana School District students. And during rehearsals, which started this week, our students, our music students are mentored by professional musicians. And then during the concert, our students are there performing with the professional musicians in their repertoire. And this year, their summer concert series, I believe, features show tunes. I don't remember the name of the concert, but I know it's all drawn from Broadway musical theater. So, come out and see that on the 7th. It is free and open to the public, by the way, which is also one of the things that, yes. Urbana, or the Urbana Pops, that's part of their mission is to bring popular orchestral music free to our community. And then Outreach in Action, I just want to remind everyone that tonight, as soon as we're done here and wrap up, you shall be receiving an email going out to all families of everyone from eighth grade all the way through our recent graduates about the selection process for the new high school principal. For those of you who haven't heard the news, Mr. Matthew Stark, who's been our principal for five years, has taken a job in Indiana. And it's, as he's asked everyone to respect his privacy, it's very much for personal reasons. He shared that with some and asked others to respect, respect his family and himself. And he's leaving under very good terms and has had an amazing time here. We have him until the end of the month. And we plan to make sure that the transition goes very smoothly for his new administrative team as they're planning for next year. But there will be an email coming out from me and Larry Simmons, who's our recruitment retention specialist, tonight, asking for people who want to participate in any phase of the selection process, from screening to interviews to hosting, as well as a short survey, both in English and in Spanish, to get feedback. So, please watch for that email tonight. The screening dates are June 18 with interviews, I believe, on the 25th or 26th. Twenty-six, thank you. I couldn't read my ink pen here. And so that should be the interview dates. The screening and interviews will take place at Urbana High School. Couple other outreach dates to mention. June 7, the Community Coalition of Champaign County is having a neighborhood night at Crestview Park, which is on Cottage Grove between Florida and Colorado. The community coalition's stated goals are to increase police and community partnerships as well as providing opportunities for youth. They're one of our partners in our Summer Youth Employment Program. That's off to a great start already this summer. And so we invite everyone to come out at 4:00 PM to Crestview Park. And then on, I'm sorry, I didn't finish writing this one down, so I'll mess it up. On June 10, the Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center is having a celebration open house at 2:00 PM at Urbana Civic Center of their, their college prep program. And so they, they, this is an annual, annual event that will be Sunday, June 10 at 2:00 PM at Urbana Civic Center. And I'm going to stop there. And Peggy, I don't know if you're going to mention the other event that you emailed me. I will be attending that one.
The News and Brews?
I'll, I'll throw it out there because I've said Karen Sims' name several times. Karen Sims, who is, again, the Peace and Resiliency Champaign-Urbana Neighborhood Champions person who has done quite a bit of work with trauma-informed care and done quite a bit of work in the last month with Urbana School District in the form of professional development. On Tuesday, June 12, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at Riggs, am I allowed to say this at the board? At Riggs Beer Company. They're having what's called a News and Brews where local Illinois public media reporters have kind of lined up a panel to talk about conversations related to safety and security in schools as well as changes in the schools. And so it's a good, good segue from, from our, our morning, or not morning, it seems like morning, from our public comments earlier this evening. So invite everyone out to that. That's 6:00 to 7:30 PM at Riggs. And that's it for me.
Yeah, I was going to mention something if I would, but I'll just add, but if you've never been to Riggs, it's a very family-friendly place to come. Young children, middle-aged, you know, youth and all that. You don't have to drink beer. It's on, yeah, it's the old TK Wendels in Urbana. But anyway, they do a lot of community work, so. If you haven't been there, it does sound funny, but News and Brews. I just wanted to mention that I appreciated participating in the Leading for Racial Equity Institute that Don mentioned. I was, you know, part of the first day. And, and the material on racial equity at the systemic and institutional and individual levels was very well-presented. And the frank discussions about why this matters in our district were very powerful. So, thank you for all the organizers. It was, it was very well-done. And I was going to ask you about attendance. You said it was close to 200, yeah. So, anyway, so, thank you.
Yeah, so the first day was voluntary and there were close to 200 people that came to that. And then the second day was the Equity Cohort. And I believe that there were right around 70, 75 people that actually attended that one. And then June 1, we had almost 90 people attend the, the Continuous Improvement Day. And that was actually required for everyone who's part of a school improvement team at the building level.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add it on the graduation. Adult Ed gave out two diplomas for, for adults who have been in Adult Ed for 20 years. Scotty Wardlow and Jason Epps. So I thought that was excellent. They hung on in there and they graduated. So I thought that was a good role model. Any other board? Paul?
So I don't know if this is the appropriate time for this or not, but there was some discussion, I guess, with John, I've had personally with regards to changing the meeting time of our next meeting earlier so he could attend. So I don't know if we could discuss it as a board at this point.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think that would be appropriate since we also have something about future sessions. I think that it'd probably be worth discussing. I know that at the last board meeting, it was a special board meeting related to the campus land use at the middle school. Board President Dimon said that the June 19 meeting, he could attend if we moved the meeting up to 6:00 PM?
Correct.
If my memory serves me. So, I will let the board have that discussion. And I think that that would actually require a motion. I don't know, Robert's Rules of Order, would it require a motion or is it, no?
What's that?
What?
Oh, it's not on the agenda.
It's just, it's just posting.
Oh, she said if it's not on the agenda.
She said it's not on the agenda.
Oh, it's not on the agenda, so we can't act.
Yeah, we can't act on it, but I guess begin.
Yeah.
Can we straw poll?
Straw poll.
We could just get a, we could just get a sense of the board.
Well, I mean, yeah, I'd, I'd make it and I'd be in favor of having John there. So, 6 o'clock.
Okay, Anne?
Yes.
Pat?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Ruth?
Yes.
And me?
Okay, we'll let John know.
All right, we'll make sure that that gets posted as a change.
Yeah, and on June 19.
Yeah, and at that meeting, will we talk about the meeting schedule for the coming year as well as dates and times?
Yes.
Okay.
So now, I think I need a motion for, and adjournment?
I move adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Meeting is adjourned at, believe it or not, 9:40.